Good evening and welcome to our first meeting this January, our first school board work session for the 2022 year. Welcome to everyone. We're going to begin this session with our SWOT analysis presentation, Dr. Gordon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to call to the podium our Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Akima Branch, to review the SWOT analysis presentation with the Board, including a review of survey data as well as some homework that we're going to ask the Board to help us develop as now is time for formation of goals before we get to specific indicators. Dr. Branch?
Dr. Branch, I'm sorry. Just before we begin, let me read this just in case some people come in while we're doing this. Our public seating is designed, our City Council has asked us to follow these rules, and of course we will because they're for our safety and our health. Our public seating will be in the green seats only. The seats have been tagged with green covers. When the green seat is full, there is additional overflow seating in the lobby that is marked. We ask all persons to cooperate. As always, every person who comes into the chamber or outside on the inside of this building will have on a mask. If you do not have on a mask, you will be excused from the building. Everyone must wear a mask for the health and safety of all individuals. When you come up to the podium, you will wear, you can remove your mask while you're speaking. The podium will be cleaned, the mics will be cleaned, and then you must put back on your mask when you finish speaking. Thank you so much for your cooperation. We appreciate it. Dr. Branch?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, School Board members, and Suffolk Public Schools lead team, as well as the community. As Dr. Gordon stated, I will be providing an overview of the recent SWOT analysis, the findings from the SWOT analysis, as well as some additional information to provide context to what was given to you in the executive summary. We'll begin with the process, and I'll detail for you and the community how we went about approaching the SWOT analysis, then provide for you the stakeholder response data, our SWOT analysis results by stakeholder group, and I'll do some comparisons and some contrasting there, and then look at our next steps to include our strategic plan focus areas and some goal setting. I want to recognize Mr. Shawn Dickerson, our Supervisor of Data and Research, who actually compiled all of this information. He is our data guru. He is the one who created the survey based on our request and collected the data. I'll go through more of the process in just a moment. Our survey was submitted to our four stakeholder groups: our students in grades eight through 12, our staff across the entire division, our parents, as well as the community. And we held that survey open for three weeks from November 15 through December 3, 2021. We use multiple means to communicate the survey and our request for everyone to participate. We use our SPS website, our multiple social media platforms, as well as email communications. Again, this was sent to four stakeholder groups. We selected for our students great English classes in grades eight through 12. All students have to take English classes. And therefore, we felt that that was a more age-appropriate group, as well as them having the experience of SPS. So they have some really quality feedback based on their experiences here in the division. The survey we provided, we disseminated, provided the purpose, gave background information, as well as some examples to provide some inference in how others could, how you could potentially respond through the survey. I am pleased, and we are pleased, that our survey response, we received over 4,288 collected surveys. Included in that were over 15,151 total comments. We read 15,151 total comments because we allowed for up to five statements for each part of the SWOT analysis for strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. Anyone submitting the survey could put any comment, up to five open-ended comments. And so we were able to collect those 15,000. Now, these are the primary, the top five primary responses by group, by theme, for each area, for each subgroup. I'm going to go through each area of the SWOT analysis and provide some context, again, some comparison and contrasting of the results. As you can see, that all stakeholder groups indicated that the high-quality caring and supportive staff was a strength. And I want to provide for you some comments from that. Caring, caring staff, everyone takes a part. The atmosphere is very welcoming. Even the custodians are nice and friendly, were some of the comments from our, from multiple groups. The division providing access and opportunities to quality educational program, that was received by parents, staff, as well as community members. They noted the quality of our programs, the offerings, the extracurricular, the opportunity for advanced programs like our AP and IB programs, Project Lead, the way were some of the examples in the feedback. Parents were the only stakeholder group to commonly express themes related to our division's communication and dissemination of information. Some of that feedback included the robocalls, timely communication from the leadership, understanding what's going on, information through Canvas and Hack, where they are able to get information, where they are able to get notes in a timely manner from, from their schools, as well as our social media platforms were acknowledged and commended for the amount of feedback. And that was primarily from parents. Community members and students indicated that our extracurricular and school activities were also a strength. What we provide for our students to make them a whole, well-rounded student, not only academics, but those clubs and organizations that help to support their development and growth. Staff members, students, and community members also commonly provided comments related to our strong climate and culture. That's very important. The welcoming environment, the family atmosphere, the sense of belonging, people being treated well, those were some of the comments. Staff members were the only group to commonly indicate that our technology access and utilization was a strength. In fact, some of the comments included, "We have more resources than we really need." "So much we can't use it all," were some of the comments. That our technology, that we have great training for technology, and that it's always updated and advancing. And so I've given you overall the strengths feedback. We'll go on to our weaknesses. And weaknesses are areas that we can improve in, some things that possibly are low-hanging fruit in a sense, where we can make some immediate turnarounds and changes. And it included areas where we probably need to look at more resources. Communication and dissemination of information was considered a weak, weakness for parents, staff, and community members, which I just told you in the strengths that parents said, information dissemination and communication was a strength. It can also be a weakness for some. And where we saw a difference was that not at the division level was it considered a weakness, but from the school level, making sure that our, our parents and families get information in a timely manner. Sometimes information beats them from social media or from students before it gets to them. And so comments were made regarding that. And, and our community engagement officer, Ms. Ward, is already working on that area to improve how our webmasters post-information, the consistency of it, the timeliness of it, and to ensure that all areas are covered. Divisions, the divisions hiring and retention practices was also considered a weakness. And this was communicated by parents, staff, and community members. Some of the feedback included retention specifically because of our numbers, with the number of people you hear about leaving for multiple reasons, and our staffing, especially this year, as people are making different decisions about whether they want to stay in education or not. And so that's an area of practice that was in the previous strategic plan that we may want to consider if that is of the Board's decision for a future, for the future strategic plan, because it's something that we'll always have to deal with. Parents, staff members, and students perceive the condition of the division's facilities and maintenance of them as being a weakness. Countless feedback about the condition, the age, the need for repair for many of our buildings. That is something that you as a Board have been working on with the city, something that has been publicly, publicly known and stated. And so that is something that all groups pretty much were stating. Our students included that also, to include different things within the building that they'd like to see repaired. However, cleanliness was noted as a strength in our buildings. Clean buildings, welcoming, bright, the branding, those type of things were considered a strength. Building repair was primarily the comments expressed as a weakness. Safety and discipline within the division was also expressed by parents, students, and community members. Safety and discipline. Staff did not include discipline. And it was noted that actually they know that the school division is working on disciplined measures, and that it is not as bad as it may be reported, which was one of the comments. Other commonly perceived weaknesses include transportation, areas that we have talked about, from parents, morale and well-being from staff members. Now, that was actually a conflicting overarching statement based on what staff said about climate and culture, and as a strength. However, we have to note the times that we're in and what staff have had to do this year. So that's just something for consideration. Leadership, staff members and community members both noted leadership as a weakness. As we delve into the comments, that could vary. It could be building leadership, department leadership, overall division leadership, as well as school board governance and leadership. Accountability was noted by community members. Students were the only group to indicate that the food services, staff quality, and climate were a weak, weakness. Dress code was commonly stated as feedback from our students. And that's something that we're already addressing at the division level. So when I say that there's some low-hanging fruit from the feedback, there's some things already in progress, and some things that we can look at and make some adjustments immediately. Under the areas of opportunities, and opportunities are those things we could consider. Community engagement, which included having volunteers in the building, was one of the primary opportunities. And we've heard from community members and, and parents that they want to be back in the building. But they do understand and receive feedback on the number of positive COVID cases and our mitigation strategies, where that's not safe at this time. However, that is something we are looking forward to having return when things are a little bit more normal. But that was one of the primary comments about community engagement, not the community engagement office and, and the information, but more so about the volunteers being in the building. Parents also indicated that family involvement in the school system was an opportunity, primarily stating that more parents can get involved. Conversely, though, we did have as a strength that our parent engagement and community engagement, engagement was strong, and that parents are very involved in their students' education, as well as their extracurriculars. Exposure to career training and post-secondary education was considered an opportunity. Having more opportunities to learn about post-secondary opportunities, careers, military, and, and other things. This year, we have not had as many visitors in the building like from some of these groups like the military to give that exposure, but that is increasing, and we are allowing some in some places. Another opportunity theme that was expressed by students and community members was related to the quality of the division's educational programs, where it was considered a strength also, the quality of our educational programs. Students and the community members stated it as a weakness. So we have to look at what they were really suggesting, or their opinion was about that. So in looking at the feedback, more educational opportunities, more dual enrollment programs, more advanced programming. So those are things that we are actually in progress with, and that we have a lot of those things, that maybe our students need more exposure to what those offerings are, as well as our community. Community members were the only group to most commonly respond with themes related to the division's budget and utilization of funds and facilities and maintenance as an opportunity. So that was the only group that, in, in that group, we only had 25 survey responses from the community. That was the group that expressed an opportunity for budget and finance. Under the areas of threats, and these are the things that could potentially harm the division, all stakeholder groups included negative stakeholder perceptions and misinformation as a primary threat to the division. That is concerning, because all groups see what is put out, the messaging, the comments on all platforms, what's done in meetings, whether it's school board or other places, how things are handled, are considered a threat for all of our groups. So that's definitely something that the Board would need to address and look at. Misinformation, I stated, budget and utilization of funds was considered a threat also, and safety and discipline. Another threat that was expressed by all groups except for students was the leaderships and, leadership and governance of the division's school board. And that's concerning, as that is viewed as a potential threat. However, that is something, if the Board considers it, that can be addressed and improved. Other common threats included communication from parents, that parent group, staff morale from staff members, climate from students. And some of the comments in this area dealt with safety, discipline, bullying, some of the topics that we've addressed this year. So this was very timely with their relevant experiences. Facilities by the students and leadership by the community members. Are there any questions or comments or thoughts based on these areas before I proceed?
Board members, do you have comments or questions? Do you have a question? Board Member Riddick?
What were the comments for, under threats, where it says "school board leadership and governance"? Were there any comments provided?
Yes. Infighting, messaging, and I can speak specifically from a community comment regarding infighting between the board chair and other board members, or a specific board member that was noted within the comments.
And just to add to that, Mr. Riddick, the biggest threat, and Dr. Branch kind of covered this, was the misinformation. The misinformation piece was viewed as the largest threat due to individuals outside of Suffolk being looked at, the school division in a negative light. of Suffolk being looked at, the school division in a negative light, where they felt that the misinformation was leading to confrontation at meetings as well as not supporting the staff.
That is correct. Thank you, Dr. Gordon.
You also answered my second question because it was about to be about the misinformation piece.
Yes.
But I see how it ties into, and it can be perceived as fighting when you're trying to correct the false narrative that's being painted. I understand.
I'll continue.
Other board members have other questions? Okay.
In November, during our work session, you all came up with some suggested or recommended strategic plan goals. And we captured those, and I submitted this information back to you, and it's on our website. Student achievement, climate and culture, operational efficiency, teacher quality, hiring and retention, and family and community engagement were your recommendations. Now that we've received the SWOT analysis, let's look at how we move this forward because those were your recommendations in November. Usually, after you've received the, and those are great, and many of them aligned with our strategic plan from the current program, plan that we're in. But now that we've received the SWOT analysis, we really need to prioritize where we're focusing and how we're focusing and whether we need to change any of the focus areas which will ultimately drive everything that we do. This will also create a framework for the entire strategic plan. So, when looking at focus areas, we'll look at the most essential issues identified by SWOT. Shaun did a phenomenal job of capturing the top five for each subgroup for each area of our SWOT. That could be how you proceed with determining your focus areas. The focus areas really are those actions on the most important levers for improving performance. Everything we do should be to improve for our future state. So, our focus areas should be considered in the future state. And they should align with all the district stakeholders, with all the district stakeholders on a clear path forward. So, student achievement being an example. Everyone under the umbrella of student achievement should know and understand that this is our focus. How we get there will be multiple ways. We'll have objectives, we'll have initiatives, but they need to know that we're focused on student achievement if that's going to be a focus area in our new strategic plan. Everyone should understand that that's our path forward. Our strategic plan focus areas will also guide the allocation of all the district resources. We're not going to consider resources that are not in alignment with the strategic plan. So, if it doesn't meet the strategic plan on whatever the focus areas are, we need to reconsider whether that should be purchased or a consideration. When we prioritize these focus areas, they also build more coherence and a greater degree of coherence between the district leadership and governance body. It's a shared leadership and partnership between Dr. Gordon as division superintendent and the school board as well as the leadership. We're all on the same page. And we prioritize our focus and why we're here, our why is answered when we have that coherent framework and plan. Within the focus areas, we're going to identify goals. And that's where I really want to take a few minutes to work with you all as a board to look at SMART goals and how, based on what we've just discussed and some of the initial thoughts, I want to get your feedback on a possibility for a focus area and then looking at some goals that would fall under that focus area. So, for example, student achievement. I think we can agree that that may be something that you all consider important for the division. Under that, what are some goals that we would have? And this is just popcorn, just thinking right now as we're in this work session, but I want to try to focus in on what you're going to be doing for your assignment and as we continue to build a framework for the strategic plan. What's another area, based on the SWOT analysis and general feedback and thoughts about where we need to be for our future state, what's another area that you may consider as a focus area?
Probably the climate and culture because of the safe environment and safety and the times in which we are living and experiencing, safety is of utmost importance.
Very good. Climate and culture, which was stated repeatedly throughout the survey.
That's right. I noticed that. So, I thought it would be a good one to consider.
Yes.
I would say communication. Our communication department is excellent, but we have to also make sure that we are telling our story first. That's the problem that affects climate and culture and how people view us. Oftentimes, people are passing false information outright while we're here. And by the time we get a handle on it, the narrative has already been painted, and then we're going back and doing damage control. Our community engagement department is outstanding. Trust me when I tell you, it's outstanding. And you see all of the things that Ms. Ward and Mr. Bradshaw and their department are doing, and it is excellent. But we have to really, I want us to really, I may be overstepping, so let me know if I'm going too far, but I would love to see us have our own media circuit where if you want to know factual, unbiased information about SPS, have you checked with SPS News outlet versus someone's Facebook page, whether it's my Facebook page or another one, but it's controlling our own story.
Mr. Riddick, you are already into strategic planning.
Sorry.
Communication may not be a focus area because it's broad enough to go under any area. However, an objective could be to improve whatever we want to say about our communication and an initiative, an indicator would be the creation of our media.
Got you.
Channel that you're going to recommend. Right.
Also, on another note, that communication piece would be a part of everything that we do, all of the focus areas in a sense. So, you are right, communication is essential here. And we certainly do have to get our story out, and I agree with you with that. So.
That would certainly be an area recommended where we even look as far down in our action items as well as our indicators. How do we know our communication is improving? We're going to talk about SMART goals and making sure that they're measurable and attainable and realistic and all of those things, but there needs to be specific indicators. And Ms. Ward, in the current plan, already has increased the communication feedback and the portals that we have feedback. So, how can we look at that differently? So, those type of things would be included and evolved as action steps and indicators throughout the plan.
And I would think that sustaining fiscal and human resources would be key to whatever we choose to do if we're looking at student achievement.
I like the way you combined that, too, sustaining fiscal and human resources.
Absolutely.
Very important. In fact, they go hand in hand. The recruitment cost is extensive and to replace teachers and all of those things. But that deals with our budget and how our budget is set up and all of the efficiencies we need. And tonight, Ms. Forsman is going to do her budget presentation, and a lot of that deals with human resources and who we have and what we have and how it impacts what we do on a day-to-day basis. But sustaining is a very strong word if that was to be a part of your focus area.
And along with that, I had the health and wellness of our staff to make sure that we're taking care of them so they can take care of what they need to take care of.
That would definitely fall under that human resources area, and it could be an objective under that focus area, definitely, the health and well-being of our staff, which impacts not only the day-to-day but their retention as well. Any other thoughts? And these are just, we're just doing brainstorming, but I am going to take note on everything that you said and make sure that we are, as we move forward, that we remind you of these things because they are valuable and could spark our further conversations. All right. So, in the next area, after we've identified the focus areas, whether, and it's recommended you have no more than three to five focus areas. As we talked about in an earlier work session during our July session, if you have too much, you can't get anything done. It's too much. It needs to be very strategic and very focused. Now, under each of those areas, you need SMART goals. And we are all aware of what SMART goals are, as meaning strategic and specific. Specific targets for, they help us reflect on our desired future state. Where do we want to go? We need to know exactly where that is. And we need to be very strategic about not only our goal but how we plan to get there. It needs to be measurable. It can't just be a check-in-the-box, "We've done it." It needs to be something where we can say, "We were here, and now we're here." That sometimes is looked at as more quantitative. However, it can be qualitative as well, but it needs to be measurable. The community wants measurable. People like data. I like data. We want to see where we are, where we were, and where we are, where we are in that snapshot moment shows growth. It needs to be attainable. And it's recommended that we are ambitious about whatever our goals are, but they really need to be attainable. Can we get there? We're talking a five-year plan, and although some things in a plan transition to the next plan, but is it attainable? Can we get there with whatever that focus area is? It needs to be results-based. So, we need to be focused on desired results. From whatever this goal is, we need a desired outcome, a desired outcome. Where do we want to be? And it needs to be time-bound. Our goals should include specific timeframes for when we're going to get it done, how it's going to get done, with benchmarks. So, if you are familiar with a Gantt chart, they have milestone markers within a Gantt chart. In a general strategic plan, it's the same way. We need to have benchmarks and milestones with whatever the goal is so we can determine where we are. Yearly, we produce those for you. We provide our updates and our actions and what has happened every year. So, you would get that information, but maybe we don't do it just every year, but maybe it's more periodic, and we can make that determination. Each goal should specify a clear objective and identify one or more indicators that the stakeholders, for the stakeholders to know and to know whether that objective has been attained, where we are, what our status is. And then finally, our next steps. I recommend to the board that for those things that were easy or easier to fix now, that can be a consideration now. Some things that you can work on and not only do it publicly but privately, that's demonstrated in some way, work on those things now. And I often say low-hanging fruit because those are the quick fixes. I'll use the students' feedback on dress code. And Dr. Gordon going out to a classroom that shared their feedback about the dress code, and they had a position about it, and they were pro and con, and it was a great discussion. But he took the time to go out to that class and talk to those students about what they really meant about change. And some of those things are going to be implemented. Now, we still have to have some parameters when it comes to the dress code, but there are some things that probably were a little dated, archaic, and maybe even gender biased. So, those things are things we can make an immediate impact on. That's something I recommend that the board considers. What are some actions you can take now? Next, you have an assignment, and Ms. Gardner will be sending you that document. It is the strategic plan focus areas that you are recommending. You will be providing for, to Ms. Gardner, and it will come to Dr. Gordon and me, looking at your focus areas and where are you concentrating for the next strategic plan. The school board chair will work through this process as Dr. Buck deems fit, but we'll look at those focus areas and prioritize where the school board is going next. What are your focus areas? And that will be due by January 28th. On that document, I include the 2018 through 23 focus areas. And then, I also include the November 4th work session recommendations that you all came up with. And now, I'm asking that by January 28th, you submit this document with your three to five, I've put five lines if you wanted to do more or less, it's totally up to you, of your focus areas. And Ms. Gardner will be sending that information to you. The school board will then develop the strategic plan goals based on those focus areas, and we'll work through this process. Remember, the goals we're recommending, they be SMART goals, and they're focused under each strategic focus area. And then, we go into the development and implementation of an action plan. And an action plan is when you get a little bit more involved into having your objectives, your indicators, your measurables, your benchmarks, your timeframe, and all of that. That's a bigger part, but very significant. But we can't do any of that until the focus areas are identified. That concludes my presentation. Are there any additional questions?
Board members, do you have any additional questions regarding the presentation and regarding our assignments for the 28th? And of course, as I do, when you send in your information, we'll put it all together, but then I'll send it right back out to you and ask you to give me your first, second, and third priority so that we can narrow it down to what we want to focus on. Okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Dr. Branch. We do appreciate it. Excellent.
Excellent presentation.
Excellent job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And we are going to move to the next item, which is our stakeholder budget development overview for 2022-23. Dr. Gordon?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Dr. Buck. It is, as you already know, we have started to process actually last month, and Ms. Forsman, our chief financial officer, is going to provide the board with a budget development overview for this next budget season for 2223. We've added some extra layers this year just to allow the entire school community and the public to understand the feedback that went through every instructional staff member, administrator, department level, and some of the priorities. Ms. Forsman is also going to talk about timeline and next steps and as we prepare for my budget presentation, which I believe is going to be on February 24th. So, Ms. Forsman?
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, school board members. We're going to talk a little bit tonight about budget development. As you know, this process starts very early. We really have become a 12-month process. So, we're going to talk about some of the things that we do with this so that we can help everyone understand exactly what goes into the development of the budget that is presented to you every February. So, as you know, the operating fund, the Food and Nutritional Services Fund, and the Grants Fund are all in the presentation. We really focus on the operational funds, but those other two funds are in our book every year, and you'll see those on separate pages. But we do focus mostly on the operating fund. fund. So the budget development calendar is approved by this board in either August or September. I try to get it to you in August because I like to have it out. And you can see here, what I have for you here is the budget development calendar that you approved this year, and there are dates on it, and there are specific times that we ask for input from the public. And so those are all on your calendar, and every year you approve the process that we're going to go through in order to develop the budget for the next year. Sitting back to it, okay. All right, so then, did that go twice, John? That went another time. So this year, we added to the development a stakeholder sheet for the schools. So every school principal was given a sheet, a Google Sheet, to solicit information and requests from every staff member. It's a formal process. We've not had this before. We've asked them to do it, but we didn't ask for a formal process. This year, we asked for a formal process. Every, every staff member was given the opportunity to fill out what they'd like to have and get those requests to the principal from those sheets, and then the principal was required to go through and decide for them and show them where, in fact, he or she was going to fund, what their request was. So whether it was allocation money, whether it was fundraiser money, whether they couldn't support it, something that they couldn't support, or if it was something that they were going to ask for as part of their budget request to the operating fund budget. So those sheets went out, so it gave our staff direct input in a formal process into the budget. So those sheets, we're reviewing them now. We've been going through them for a couple of months now, and anything that we can fund that is not funded with allocation money is being looked at to see if we can fund this year. Got a lot of supply chain issues, but we're trying very hard to see what we can fund and provide for our teachers based on their requests. Ninety percent of the requests were funded by allocation money, though, so there were not a lot of requests that we had to fund. Lots of the requests were funded directly with allocation money sent to the schools. Here is an example of a sheet. I had to put it in a table. It's too large, but basically, this particular staff member asked for this dial stackable lap tray. Where do we get it? What is the item number? How much is it? What would be the total cost? And in this case, the principal said allocation money will pay for that and purchased it with allocation money. So you can see that's direct input into the budget. What does a teacher need? What does a staff member need? And then the principal responds so that everyone knows where their item is coming from. The principal also had a request sheet. You can see here, and there are tabs along the bottom, the principal was asked for facility needs, for equipment needs, for technology additions, for technology replacements, as well as personnel needs. They placed their information and their justification prioritized in these sheets, and then these sheets are also reviewed by the leadership. Try and get there, hold on. There it is. The school requests that were sent to, or put in the operating fund, requests by those principals were then consolidated into a consolidated school request sheet, and you can see here, I picked three that we're actually funding. There's lots that we're having to look into a little more, and some there that we have supply issues, but basically, you can see here, Southwestern asked for activity carpets. They needed two of them. They told us where they wanted them from. We funded those this year. Same thing with these light upright chair storage carts, and then this silver level limited access item that the Northern Shores wanted. So you can see that we've been through these sheets. We continue to go through these sheets and try to fund immediately what those things that we can fund, and those that we can, that we can't fund or that we can't get supply for, we're leaving on a year-end sheet to see what we can do at year-end, or it goes into the next year and we ask again, do they need those? So we do not just let the stuff go into a pile and not look at it. It is constantly looked at by the leadership and kept out there year to year. Departments do the same process. They have their own sheets. Each department gets the same, as you can see, this is a very similar sheet. Again, it's line itemed by that department, so if that department or that leader is responsible for several areas, you can see the tabs at the bottom are all the different areas they're responsible for. If you look here on the side, every object code, everything that they're responsible for, whether it's part-time or purchase services, they have to give a justification, and the blue highlight shows what they're asking for. It tells us whether it's an increase or decrease, and every single department head sits in front of Dr. Gordon and I and justifies every line with us to discuss budget. They also have technology. They also have facility replacements for those that have facilities, and a place to put personnel, so they also have an opportunity to add personnel requests. School board members were also asked formally this year to put their request in a Google Sheet. We have those requests as well, and those requests are being considered as part of the overall budget in the same manner that we have been doing all the departments and the schools. For community input, our first community input was December 9th. As you know, at the school board, we had a public hearing. It was advertised in both the Suffolk News Herald, the Virginian Pilot, on our social media, and on our website. In December and January, as I said, all directors and department heads sit with the superintendent, and they go over all their operational costs one by one, all their personnel requests one by one. They're all considered and discussed and justified, and questions are asked, and sometimes we ask some very pertinent questions about why do you really need that, and we come to some terms about what we think we're going to add to the budget or not. All school staff will meet with the superintendent. He will do virtual meetings with them, the last week in January, first week in February, probably, and where he'll talk to them about what he's looking to accomplish. He'll ask for feedback, and he'll gather feedback from all of the staff across the division as part of the budget process. Also in February, there'll be meetings scheduled two by two with board members to discuss what Dr. Gordon is going to have as his proposed budget, to get your feedback, to make sure that we're doing what you would like us to do, and we're meeting the needs that you feel we need to meet, and then if there are any concerns, we take those into consideration and make changes prior to the presentation. So then the superintendent's proposed budget is done in February. At that time, we open up Ask a Budget question for our community and staff to ask any question they would like on the budget. It's an email that comes directly to me, and I answer those directly back to them, and then we do frequently ask questions on the website as part of that. They can also attend the March public hearing. They can find our, our budget book physically at libraries and at all school libraries. They can also look online. So it is in multiple places across the division where folks can look at our budget and ask questions and, and put, gather input for the budget public hearing in March. So our primary focus in the budget is staff salaries and compensation, so salaries and benefits. The benefits are set by other people. Obviously, they're set by the VRS and the state. They're not set by us. We are required to meet those percentages for the percentage of payroll. We do not make those decisions ourselves. So eighty-six point six-five percent of our budget is made up of the salary and compensation. So this is a huge part of our budget. It is a lot of what we spend our time on. So what we do with teachers is every year, I do a comparison for Dr. Gordon of the Region Two salaries. In September, I pull all of the compensation plans for Region Two. I put them in a comparison for him, show him where we sit. Basically, where do we stand with us versus about 11 of them? It's really, I think, 12, but one of them is very small, so we don't usually use that one. But 11, where do we sit? What is our ranking? How far are we from the top paying one? What do we look like? And I do that for not only the first step and middle steps, but I do every other step so we can see where we might have some weaknesses. Then the state may take action as part of their budget. As you heard, the outgoing governor has proposed a 5% raise for teaching staff and for all staff. We'll see if that stays in the budget, but at this point, that's what's been proposed. So they, they may take action and tell us we have to give a raise of a certain amount. And then late April's usually when we find out what we're going to be required to do by the state. As you can see here, the teaching salaries, we've spent a lot of time with teaching salaries, especially over the last three years, making those go up, having compensation go up for our teachers. You can see here, we were at $43,000 to start three years ago. We are now this year at $46,300. And then we're, we've got plans in place to try to up that as much as we can each year to keep us as competitive as possible. Support staff, as you know, we're in the middle of a phase in with, we're looking at our support staff in 2122. This year, we did grade seven through 14. They went from $8.58 an hour to $13.84 an hour as a minimum. You know the minimum wage went up to $11 per hour. January 1 of this year, we've made those adjustments to the three substitute groups that weren't quite at $11 an hour. For their January pay, we'll start at $11 an hour. Phase two comes in next year, where we pretty much through the process for phase two. Here are all the groups that are included in phase two. Most of the work has been done. We're in the middle of costing this out to add this to the proposed budget. Phase three will include grades 22 through 28, a new professional scale, and a new administrator scale. Staffing, new staffing will now focus on school counselors, testing coordinators, clerical support for elementary and middle, high school teachers, to alleviate the teachers covering that sixth block, and instructional support staff. So how are salaries budgeted? What we do is we take the payroll, live payroll, from the largest payroll we have during the year, usually October 31st or November 15th, and we take that and we look at that and say, okay, how many positions are in general education elementary, for example? And if I only have 300 positions on the payroll, and there are 341 positions in the book budgeted, then I add 41 vacancies to that because I want to make sure that I'm matching apples to apples. And we look at that by position, by group, and so we group them the same as the Virginia Department of Education requires us to group it, as the budget book shows it. So you can see that, for example, 341 teachers in general education elementary, the cost is $20,276,238 in 2122. If I'm going to apply a raise to that, what we do is say what it would be the raise if I raised it 3% or 5%, and whatever it is, I apply that amount for the first 10 steps on the scale to, 44% basically of the total, is multiplied by that 3%, and then for the rest of them, because there's a differential in those steps, I apply 3.75, 3.75% to the difference of the 56. So it's very much high-level adding a total to it because, as you know, people change. People change over. We might have a teacher come there, go here. We just want the total and what would be the raise and come up with the number. We don't try to go down to the person level. Retirement rates, as I said, are set by the state. Here are the professional rates for next year. There are the current rates, but there are also the rates for next year. You can see FICA stays the same, and that almost 26% of salary is those benefits. A lot of money for benefits. Again, here's the non-professional rates. These are also set by the state, and you can see that's 14.78%. Healthcare is another large expense that we have, and how do we budget that? What we do is we look at prior year expense for that line item for healthcare, and if I'm adding FTEs, I put $9,500 per added FTE to that line. And the reason I do that, let me get back. The reason I do that is because we subsidize employee-only at $6,200. We subsidize families at $13,800, so I go in between the two of those, and I put the $9,500. That way, I've covered whether they choose one or the other, and we don't have to worry about, you know, trying to figure out what someone new coming in might want for their healthcare. So operating costs, there's been a lot of talk about operating costs. Operating costs are anything that is not personnel-related. If it's salary or benefit, it's in personnel cost. Everything else is non-personnel cost or operating cost, and it includes things like purchase services. Purchase services are anything that we contract someone else to do for us. That can be lots of things. There's maintenance contracts, there's consulting contracts, there's auditors, professional services, roof repair. All of those are services we contract someone else to do, so we purchase those services. That's why it's called purchase services. Now, the budget book this year, we've made a change. It will have a glossary that will explain a lot of the terminology and definitions for lots of things in the budget book. So folks that are reading it will have an opportunity to go to that glossary and see what does it mean, state revenue? What is Medicaid revenue? What is CTE SOQ? Those kinds of things. It'll explain those things and why they're in there and where the revenue comes from and what it's based on. So we will have that added to the book this year. So for budgeting, again, each department director, they put their needs request out. Each line is defended, and those requests go to the superintendent, but he makes changes to those requests when balancing the budget. Balanced budget is required by law. We cannot do an unbalanced budget, so it is required. Revenues must equal expenditures. You cannot do it any other way. You're not allowed by law. If there's a difference, though, when we get down to the end and there's a difference, whether the state changes something, the city changes something, and it's an unbalanced budget at that point, the superintendent makes those decisions with this board's input and decision. So there are three budgets basically produced annually. We have the superintendent's proposed budget, which is generally, generally, let me get that out, generally, the governor's budget because we don't have a decision from the General Assembly. So we generally start there with the governor's budget. Then there's the school board's approved budget, which we have a date by law that we're required to have by April 1st to the city. And then there's the adopted budget. Now, the adopted budget comes after the city has made their decision on their budget, which includes ours, and after the General Assembly finalizes their budget. Then we come back to this board, and this board adopts their budget, and that becomes the school board's adopted budget for the next fiscal year. Any questions on budget before I move on to school activity funds?
Board members, are there questions? Thank you. You make the call.
Thank you. All right, so school activity funds are different. They are not operating funds. They are not subject to the same reporting requirements as the operating funds. They are a very different fund. Every school has a school activity fund. It is their fund run at the school level. Now, the finance department provides oversight. We provide training. We have a handbook that we keep for them, that we manage the financial side of what they need to do, but the school activity funds are run at the school level. School activity funds are fiduciary funds, and fiduciary funds just means that it's using governmental accounting and it, it's held in trust. You hold something in trust for others. There are four parts to the school activity funds. Athletics, clubs, allocations, which is the instructional money that this board approves for us to send to the schools for them to purchase things for instruction, and then general fund, which is basically the principal's fund and the grade level or department chair level funds. Athletic funds are collected for the benefit of athletic programs. Students use fundraisers, game sales, donations. All those things are used to gather money for athletics, to help our athletic programs. The funds may not be transferred out of athletics for any other purpose. They're collected for the good of athletics. They must be used for the good of athletics. Clubs, funds collected for clubs, same thing. Members, they get fundraisers, they donations, they do whatever they can to get money for their club. It may not be used for any other purpose. If a club isn't, isn't active anymore for four years, then we consider transferring the money to a different club. I've only done that once in 11 years, and it was $65. I do not like to do that, but it has happened one time in 11 years. But clubs have to be used for the function of that club. If I come to you for a fundraiser and I say I'm raising funds for such-and-such club and you buy something, your expectation as a public would be that that would benefit that club. So we are holding the money in benefit for that club, so they may not be transferred and used for any other purpose. The instructional allocations, again, are reported per state requirements in the operating fund. So this board approves those funds in the operating fund. They are properly reported in the operating fund by account code that is under the state management in the operating fund and sent to the schools. The schools use it for the purpose of instructional supplies that they determine that they need based on teacher input, and whatever is not expended and obligated at year-end must be returned to the operating fund. There's a special account called allocations received in every single school activity fund books, in their books. There's a fund, the account code called that. They are required to receipt the money that they receive from us They are required to receipt the money that they receive from us into that account. So you see it as a whole. And then, when they make their decisions, or their budgets, if you will, they move that money from that one account and they allocate it to the other accounts. So if you look at their reporting, you will see a credit or parentheses around that account code as transferred, and positive numbers in all the other instructional allocation code accounts that equals zero, because you have an amount received, an amount put out to those budgets. So it should be zero. There should not be a difference. So if you're looking at the reporting, you have to look at that as a whole, not one single line. If you're looking at the entire report for school activity funds, the balance is all four pieces of the activity fund, not just the instructional accounts. So you cannot look at one piece and say, oh, that's just these instructional accounts. No, it's not. It's all four sections, athletics, clubs, and the general fund, as well as instructional. So the total is all four pieces of that fund. So if you look at one, I looked at one here recently, the total was three hundred thousand dollars. That is not the amount of allocation we sent to that school. That is the total amount of cash that school has for all funds, clubs, athletics, everything. So you cannot look at the one number and say that's what they have for instruction. That's not true. It's what they have for clubs, athletics, and general, as well as instruction. And there may be, there may be balances at year-end in those instructional accounts because they've obligated those things. So I don't ask for them to send it back to me if they have a purchase order in place for those goods and services. It's only when they do not have a purchase order in place for those goods and services that we ask for the money back. And yes, we do check carefully, because that's an audit comment otherwise. Again, any instructional funds must come back. They are not required to match the state coding. We're not required to report three years of the budget or three years of that account. None of the reporting for the activity funds is required to be like our budget or like any other state report. It is not a state-reported account. That fund is not a state-reported account. It is a cash basis account run at the school level. So the expectation should not be that we have state reporting for these accounts. That is not what we have. We have an audit every year. They do provide financial statements to us for each individual school and as a whole, but is not done the same way as all the other reporting. It is not part of the annual state report that we report expenditures to the state because, again, the only expenditure in their accounts already exists in the operating fund. So it is not necessary to do it a second time and report the annual state, on the annual state report, the school activity fund. The rest of the funds in the school activity fund are fiduciary, collected for clubs, collected for athletics. So there's no need to report those as expenditures. They are not. And again, it is normal to have balances at the end of the year for clubs and athletics. Absolutely normal. What's not normal is to have a negative in any of those accounts. And trust me, we look at that carefully. You are not allowed to have a negative at any given month-end or year-end in any of your accounts. Questions on the school activity funds? Okay. There's some major federal ongoing projects we thought we just would like to bring to your attention tonight and make sure that everyone understands that they're still going on. CARES Act Two and Three, the plans are on the website. We have just about spent CARES Act One. What we have left is mostly what had to be given out to private schools. There's very little left in there. I think there's less than thirty thousand left in there for PPNE for us, for the operating fund. So, and that's obligated. So we have pretty much spent CARES Act One down. But you can see here that Two and Three include things like replacement instructional devices, Saturday school and tutoring, professional learning, COVID testing, social-emotional learning, expanded summer school with bonuses, hard-to-fill position bonuses and retention stipends, headsets for teachers, curriculum writing, funds for Virtual Virginia and other online programs that help our students, curriculum writing to align the curriculum to where our students are, new roofs for Oakland, Mack Ben, Junior, Northern Shores in the summer of twenty-twenty-two. We hope to put those three roofs on. We are changing those shingle roofs that have many, many leaks and cost us lots of money every year to standing seam metal roofs that cost us almost nothing per year. Then we will move on to Creekside, Hillpoint, and Southwestern, if there's money in twenty-twenty-three. Southwestern is last. We had to value engineer the metal roof off of Southwestern when we built it in order to build it for the funds we had, but it is already causing leaks at six years old, and it's already costing us money because shingle roofs leak. They're not designed for commercial buildings. So if we have the funds available to do the entire project for Southwestern, we will put that on in twenty-twenty-three. But that's only if we have the funds. We're not sure we have enough to do it, especially in the environment that we're in right now, but we wanted to get approval from the state, because we had to get separate approval from the state to do this with the money. We wanted to get the approval for that one as well in case we have the money to do it. And there's much more. There's, I've just hit the tip of the iceberg here with what the funds are being used for, but I wanted you to be aware that we are continuing with these plans. We're continuing to work them, continuing to go out for bid for the things we need to, getting them designed. And so we hope, like I said, to have those roofs for Oakland, Mack Ben, and Northern Shores this summer. In addition, as you know, Governor Northern gave us HVAC money, so we have plans, and the equipment has arrived. It is sitting in the warehouse now for Nansson River High School's gym, Lakeland High School's gym, and Elephants Fork Elementary. So the equipment is here. They are ready to start work mid-June. We're also working on the Center for Performing and Production Arts at Lakeland. The first phase is in progress. We hope to have an open house if we can ever get these folks to get our permits. The sound rooms, soundproof rooms have been ordered. They are expected in in March. The piano lab, most of that equipment is here already. They're designing right now the collaborative learning spaces in the hall. They'll be taking out the lockers and putting collaborative spaces where those lockers are with some nice projections boards and some really nice areas for our students to work collaboratively and together, and separately as well in that area with some benches and some desks and stuff. It's going to look really nice. So they're working on that, and that should be worked on, they should be done here soon. We'll go out for bid, and then that will be done over the summer, so it'll be ready for our students. The third phase will be this auditorium makeover, and that will not happen until the following year because it takes about a year to design that, because there's sound systems involved, there's lighting involved, there's seating involved. ADA has to happen, because if you know that auditorium over there, it does not have a ramp up to the stage on the front side, so that has to happen. So there's lots of pieces to that that take a while to design, but we are working on that, and that's going to happen, we hope, next year. So they are, they'll be working their way through that. Also, we're looking at artificial turf athletic fields. We hope to have Lakeland's put in this year. Nansson River will follow, and then Kings Fork after that. Kings Fork is at the end because of all the sinkholes we've had. We want to get that completely done and make sure we have no problems before we add an artificial turf over there, because we do not want it to have problems. It's a lot harder to fix. So we're going to wait on that one till the end. We also have ongoing projects, as you know. We have rotations for everything now, the professional painting at schools rotation, the paving the parking lots rotation, playgrounds. We're in final stages with looking at Oakland and Mack Ben. We've, we're waiting for Northern Shores for the addition because we know we have drainage issues and some things over there to deal with, so we want to wait and get that as part of that addition. So we will plan that accordingly as we move forward with the City CIP. That is all I have. Are there any questions?
Madam Chair. First of all, I just want to definitely thank Ms. Forsman for the amount of detail that she has placed into this presentation. As you all can see, we have, we have heard, you know, several layers of feedback in the two years and some changes I've been here. This is why we've added some extra layers, including the spreadsheet that you saw, the breakdown of each individual fund and spending, the processes. And this is why, as our team always says, that Ms. Forsman is the finance guru, and she takes her role very, very seriously. And this is also the reason why the school division has had these perfect audits. The amount of detail, the specifics, the timeline that has included Madam Chair is just what I wanted to have a brief comment on, and also to thank Ms. Forsman publicly for her work.
Thank you. Board members, do you have comments? Questions?
Madam Chair.
Madam Vice Chair.
I just want to say, Ms. Forsman, I've been on board a long time. She's a very thorough person, as Dr. Gordon said, and we're lucky to have her, and we don't want you going anywhere. She has always wanted to add innovative things along the way, because I've discussed things with her over the years, and now I'm seeing some of these things happen. And that Google sheet, I'm very happy with that. I think that gives everybody input, and that's what people have been asking for. But there's so many things involved with the budget, and we're just very lucky to have Ms. Forsman at the helm and her crew, which I believe are understaffed, doing an excellent job. And we've had some retirements and things in recent year, and she's managed to keep the ball rolling and doing even more things than we were doing before. And she's managing the money efficiently, and our audits prove that. And, you know, we need to really commend the finance department for the job that they're doing. Yeah. Thank you.
And I will, I will say this one last thing. Thank you for leaving no questions unanswered. We have answered every question that has been posed. We want to thank also, and I will do so at seven o'clock, our city council at the last meeting. They answered any questions that were legitimate questions that were posed. They cleared up any questions about any differences in our audits and those audits that were taking place, letting people know that they were one in the same audit, and you have answered any questions that could possibly come up that are legitimate questions. We just want to thank you for a job well done. And we're going to end this segment, this work segment, and we will come back again at seven PM. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, they sent me a text.
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you...
Okay.
Please don't come in unless you have true words.
Right.
Unless you... Our board clerk will again read a statement prior to your coming forward. We will use this platform to get information from the public. Any misinformation will be corrected at the end of the speaking. If there is any misinformation, we will not permit our form to be used to pass along misinformation. So any misinformation will be corrected. However, we will listen carefully to any information that is presented by the public. Madam Clerk, would you read the statement?
It is the intent of the school board to ensure that the affairs of the board be conducted in an open and orderly manner, that all persons desiring to address the board are afforded an opportunity to do so. Any persons addressing the board shall, one, confine their comments to matters germane to the business of the school board; two, refrain from words or statements which, from their usual construction and common acceptance, are construed as insults and tend to incite violence or breach of the peace; three, refrain from obscenity, vulgarity, or other breach of respect; four, comply with the time limit for public comment as set by the board, which can be up to five minutes unless the board through the exercise of its discretion decides to allow less than five minutes for public comment; five, refrain from cumulative or repetitive remarks; and six, refrain from making any comment regarding any pending student discipline or employee grievance matters. The appropriate forum for such matters is the applicable administrative hearing provided by state law or where appropriate court proceedings. The school board welcomes comments from the public as appropriate. Board members will listen to public comments but will not comment unless granted permission by the chair. The chairman or other presiding officer shall preserve decorum and shall decide all questions of public order subject to appeal to the board. At the request of the chairman, a city police officer shall act as sergeant-at-arms at all board meetings. The officer shall, under the discretion of the chairman or other presiding officer, have charge of the board chambers, the board conference room, the waiting areas and corridors adjacent thereto, and the school administration building, and shall prevent disorder or interruption of the business of the board. Please state your name and address before speaking.
Thank you. Our first speaker is Ethel Williams, and her comments will be directed toward budget matters. Ms. Williams?
My name is Ethel Williams, and I live at 200 Gloucester Avenue in Portsmouth, Virginia. Good evening. Good evening, Dr. Gordon and school board members. My name is Ethel Williams. I am the president of the Education Association of Suffolk, representing educators from all levels of employment in Suffolk Public Schools. I'm here this evening to speak on behalf of a budget request. Educators are very appreciative of the past increases we've received in the numerous instructional materials we use daily to provide a quality education to our students. We are looking forward to an increase again this year as well. The reason for this expectation is, over the past two years, we have been presented and conquered many challenges with the onset of COVID-19. We have worked virtually with students and parents. We have worked with hybrid sessions, and now we are working face-to-face amid the pandemic. We have experienced our work expectations mounting with new tasks due to more demands being placed on our shoulders and the exiting of our colleagues for various reasons. We have set through professional development one day with the expectation to implement it the very next day. We understand the magnitude of educating the children of Suffolk in a safe environment, which has caused an increase in anxiety, depression, and nervousness among my colleagues. We are tracking data, dealing with disrespect, creating engaging lessons, and arriving at our work sites each day with the knowledge that we are doing our best for the future. With this, we are looking forward to a salary increase. I am asking for an increase of 5% for each employee to be considered in the upcoming budget. I thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tanisha Kelly, who will speak about the COVID numbers and kids are our future. Tanisha Kelly? Our next speaker is Carly Bosco. Carly Bosco, who will speak about the personnel report, bus patrol reporting. Ms. Bosco?
Good evening. Carly Bosco, 2729 Burning Tree Lane. I come tonight to touch on three topics, but as always, I'd like to start by acknowledging and thanking all the teachers and staff, not only at Florence Bowser but throughout the district. My family personally recognizes and appreciates the extraordinary efforts you all are taking to make the best of current circumstances. My children come off the bus smiling almost every day and excited to tell me what happened in their day, and that is thanks to the efforts of each of you, so sincere thanks. As I've discussed the previous two meetings, the personnel report remains concerning. The December report shows 16 resignations and only five new teacher hires. The loss-to-gain ratio continues to deepen. The implications of this reach far beyond the current inability to cover classes. Teachers are leaving at a faster rate than they can be hired and can be educated. This problem is, of course, larger than Suffolk, but what is Suffolk doing to address the elements that can be controlled? At the December meeting, this was mentioned as something that was being discussed, and to stay tuned, but how long do we have before it's too late? I note here, the question of what is being done is not only about financial compensation, though it is important, but also what is being done to reduce the unmanageable workload expectations. Teachers are being tasked well beyond contract hours with so many things beyond their classroom teaching and planning, it's simply unsustainable. Switching to the informational item of the bus patrol, I simply want to say I think this is fantastic. All steps to increase student transportation safety, especially given the geographic diversity in Suffolk and the roads that some children have to cross to get on the buses, this is wonderful. The fact that it's a zero-cost solution is even better. I only wish it wasn't buried in the information section of this agenda so that it was discussed and made better known to the community at large. Finally, and most critically, the current, in the current circumstances, I move on to the COVID situation. When I spoke in October, I addressed the inadequacy of the district's COVID dashboard and asked for improvement. I noted the paucity of information provided and the subpar frequency of update, particularly compared to other Hampton Roads districts, who are updating daily, providing quarantine data, as well as case breakouts between students and staff, providing metrics on outbreaks and counts of students who have moved temporarily to virtual learning. Suffolk reports merely a case count, and now, as we are experiencing unprecedented numbers, this dearth of information available to the public is resulting in concern, in some cases, panic and defiance to parents and the public. Now that more people are trying to read the dashboard, the numbers don't add up. Looking at the dates, looking at the update for the January 2nd through 9th, the numbers reported in school cases do not match the number of exposure letters that were received by parents during that same timeframe. On January 11th, the district sent the virtual learning option email, and parents can't make it make sense. Sure, 65 cases is a higher number than any other period has been reported, but out of this total student population, it's still a small percentage, and so people are confused. They're confused because the dashboard doesn't reflect staffing stresses. The dashboard doesn't reflect students out on quarantine or students simply out sick to make the complete picture. With this information void, parents are relying on hearsay, rumor, and innuendo relayed by what their students hear, other parents say, and in some cases, what they hear from staff. The lack of information and the inaccuracy of the little information that is provided breeds distrust. It's not possible to build the best SPS without mutual trust. I implore you to improve the data you are sharing, giving us, excuse me, give us in the Suffolk community the picture in focus, no matter how ugly it may be. We are asking for information that you most certainly are tracking internally. Disclose how many classes are in temporary virtual status. Disclose the percentages of staff and students sick and in quarantine. Disclose the classes, the number of classes, meeting in person but with a virtual teacher. Maybe you fear painting this picture will cause more panic or cause people to lose more faith in the system, but what good communication can and will do is build community understanding and support as well as establish trust. Finally, in these communications, I ask you to consider the messaging. Please stop highlighting staff burnout. This results in scapegoating the teachers. Staff are burnt out, to be sure, but burnout is the effect and not the cause. Please stop feeding the narratives that some choose to propagate, that staff aren't willing to work hard or aren't strong enough to be doing their jobs, or they should just leave if they don't like it. These individuals, largely women, most of whom have families and students of their own, are making enormous personal sacrifices to keep schools operating and stave off a most certain implosion. We don't need half-days or breaks or temporary virtual or other mitigation to help with staff burnout. We need those things to safely keep school in session. To fix burnout requires much deeper solutions. Thank you for your attention, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sumi Agar, and my parents are on the research and we're to be back here. My plan after high school are to continue my education at Hampton. Firstly, my honor, major in my degree pre-med, to improve my education to become a part of the...
Something happened. Are we ready? Okay. Patricia Holloman?
She had a COVID exposure, and she has to be removed.
I'm sorry?
She's not here.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Deborah Wallstrom? Ms. Wallstrom will speak about the SWOT analysis data and purchase cards.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. Tonight, I will be sharing comments related to the SWOT analysis, followed by comments about purchase cards. The SWOT analysis provides you with information that will be used to inform the strategic plan. I want to encourage you to also SWOT the data you have on hand, disaggregated by required subgroups of students who are black, white, economically disadvantaged, and those in special education. Monitoring of these subgroups is a federal requirement and also tied to school accreditation. This is an opportunity to establish a workable structure for monitoring student achievement. Please consider conducting a SWOT analysis for each of the core content areas, reading, writing, math, science, and social studies. I encourage you to thoroughly study the outcome, demographic, and process data for each content area to help ensure you are directing actions toward things that actually improve student achievement. For example, reading would have its own SWOT analysis. Assessments related to reading include PALS, the SOL assessments, grades in reading and English, results of the reading portion of the SAT and ACT, grades in AP or IB English, and so on. All could be represented on a SWOT analysis for reading. You could even start with the first screening tool students see for reading, the division level PALS. Looking at the trend in PALS data for the past six years, I see discerning patterns. A student can come to school, meeting the PALS benchmark at the beginning of kindergarten, but not meet the benchmark at the end of kindergarten. The student then doesn't meet the benchmark at the beginning of first grade, nor the higher benchmark at the end of first grade, and it's the same for second and third grade. This is a programmatic issue. At the end of the last school year, not one elementary school improved the percentage of students meeting benchmark from fall to spring, not one. And over half the schools that administered PALS pre-COVID had the same pattern. This kind of data is perfect for a SWOT analysis of reading. The SWOT analysis presented earlier in the evening is perception data, and that's good. But please remember other types of data that will inform decisions, your outcome, your demographic, and your process data. All are needed as you prepare for setting achievable goals for the strategic plan. I always appreciate the opportunity to provide a monthly update related to purchasing cards. Purchasing card transactions totaled $247,385.82 for December 14, 2021. As usual, the favorite vendor is Amazon. Also, as usual, we cannot tell what was purchased. The favored food stores, restaurants, and coffee shops are in the report, as are the hotels and airfare. As usual, there are no receipts for these purchases. But we now know who supervises the purchase card program. We also know, we also know there are about 60 purchase cards out. That is 60 cash cards out with no attached accountability. We also know who holds these cards. We are not yet confident in how updated the list is, because thus far, the list has at least one name on it for someone who never accepted a purchase card. And surprise, 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 it seems that all of you on the board have a purchase card. Superintendent, the board clerk, the board's attorney also have a purchase card. Perhaps that is why you feel no need to ask questions or inquire about what is purchased by the cards, or to pursue more transparency to citizens in our community for these purchase cards. Thank you. That's it for the purchase card update for the evening, and I look forward to providing you with another update at next month's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of our public speakers for this evening. And just as a correction and a note, ladies and gentlemen, with regard to PALS scores, as I believe I've said before, the PALS is a criterion-referenced instrument that's used for teachers to evaluate students, find out where they are when they come in at the beginning of the year. It's given three times a year normally, in the fall, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Branch, then mid-year, then at the end of the year, to see where they are when they get to you, see what progress they've made in the middle, and see what your end results are. It is for teachers for instructional purposes, not to grade or compare. The instrument is not designed that way. I believe the origin is at the, was at the University of Virginia. I'm a graduate of the University of Virginia, was there, I believe, when they first started to develop and use that instrument. I use it throughout Virginia, and it's not used in that way. So trying to use it as an instrument to compare groups and to do some of the things that people are using it with is a misrepresentation and inappropriate for that. We had all sorts of people in our, when we used, I believe you presented earlier, Dr. Branch, the fact that we used eighth through 12th graders in our survey. In that group, eighth through 12th graders in Suffolk Public Schools, we captured all of the demographics, those students who were economically, on all spectrums of the economic strata, we used all races and all genders. So I think we covered folks who were in all the spectrum, so they were included in the group, but the... group. But the actual instrument that we used was not used for any kind of academic purpose. It was indeed to get opinions about certain topics so that we could get started. It's not a beginning or an ending thing. It's a fluid kind of operation so that we could see where to start and where to get going. We're still working on our strategic plan. It's one that will be carried out. We're still working on it. So as I said, it's fluid. And lastly, with regard to the purchase cards, large organizations have purchase cards for people for various things. Board members have purchase cards, and the purchase cards are handed to us when we go somewhere representing Suffolk Public Schools. We don't have to pay for that out of our own pockets. I had mine to go to the Virginia School Boards Association Conference in Williamsburg. I used it to pay my bill. I gave the receipts back, and I no longer have the purchase card in my possession, which is what I do with the purchase card. I don't keep it. I don't buy gas with it. I don't buy lunch with it unless I'm at a conference or somewhere representing Suffolk Public Schools. That's what corporations do. That's what companies do. That's what organizations do. School systems do that all over the country. It's not unique to Suffolk Public Schools. Thank you, and we will spend no more time on that. Anyone who came earlier would have gotten an excellent explanation of what we do with our budget, all our expenditures. If they went to last week's city council, the city council did a superior job of explaining audits and all sorts of things. We don't have any problems with that. And if we spent money for food, for training, for any kind of workshop we had, and we gave people lunch, you will not know who had sandwich or chicken nuggets or whatever, because we got a large array of food, and people ate whatever it was they wanted from there. So that won't help at all. But just to know, if we were doing anything that was inappropriate, somebody would have picked it up, and nobody did. We had federal audits, state audits, and of course, our normal audit, and it was taken care of at the last city council meeting. Everybody got all the information they needed, and the information that you got before this board meeting included all of our expenditures for this month. Having said all of that, we're going to move on to reports by the superintendent and hear the good news from Suffolk Public Schools. Mr. Superintendent, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brooks Buck. I'm going to call to the podium our community engagement officer, Ms. Anthony Ward, to show some highlights in our good news report from district staff participated in our holidays parade, all district choir, some of our outstanding information, had a sneak peek audio there from some of our SPS alumni, some other family engagement things, and some great work by our bus drivers. Ms. Ward?
Thank you, Dr. Gordon. Good evening.
Your time's up. Time's up.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, and members of our school board. I do want to say I'm excited to present our first good news report for 2022. I want to start off by backtracking just a little bit to touch on some of our good news highlights from the end of last year. So some of you may have attended the, I'm going to actually skip forward for a second, some of you may have attended the 2021 Suffolk Holiday Parade. The theme was "Home for the Holidays," and in the parade featured some of our SPS fine and performing arts students who brought holiday cheer to downtown Suffolk. Several of our Suffolk families and community members came out to enjoy the festivities. I want to highlight our SPS Bus Drivers Association, who won Best Marching Walking Unit, Lakeland High School, who won Best Second Place for Best School Band, and Kingsfork High School, who won Third Place for Best School Band. I've included some photos to share from the event. I'd also like to shout out our amazing Supervisor of Fine Arts, Dr. Jolene Neighbors. I normally see her out here, but I guess she couldn't make it tonight. But I want to highlight her for all of her hard work during the holiday season in coordinating our superintendent's holiday card contest amongst several of our SPS winter events. Dr. Neighbors also assisted in organizing our student highlight on WGNT, Sounds of the Season. A videographer and producer from WGNT visited some of our school buildings on December 3rd and 6th to film Sounds of the Season. The highlights aired on WGNT, Channel 27, featuring several of our students performing some of our favorite holiday songs that you can see listed there in the PowerPoint. John Yates Band performed "Happy," Northern Shores Elementary, "Don't Eat a Point," set up, and Winter Again, just to name a few. So it's great to see our students highlighted on local news, and I'm sure that they truly enjoyed the experience. We also want to congratulate all the students listed here for their selection in the 2022 All District Choir. So this is a high honor for student musicians, showing their talent, abilities, and music literacy. So with all the names listed here, what that tells us is that our students can really sing.
They can.
Certainly, congratulations to those students listed, and again, and congratulations to their teachers for a job well done. Cyber Patriot. So Cyber Patriot is the national youth cyber education program created by the Air Force Association to inspire K-12 students toward careers in cybersecurity or other science, technology, engineering, and math disciplines critical to our nation's future. A CCAP team, so one of four, placed first, which is the state of Virginia's Silver Tier in the Cyber Patriot competition. Four CCAP teams will be moving on to the regional round this month. Our students' names are listed here. From Nansman River, we have Taya Bilal, Dallas Slaughter, Chris Griffin, Maurice Harrison, Christian Lowe, Damian Artis, Zavion Sutton, Sylvester Clark, who is my little cousin, Ekneen Nawalzy, Kristen Ellis, Erica Lynn, Jackson Hertie from Kingsfork High School. And from Lakeland, we have Yasenia Winston and Christina Hoover. And here we have a photo of our first-place team. So certainly, congratulations to those students. The following teachers were selected for our December Teacher Spotlight for their commitment and dedication to Suffolk Public Schools. Bernard Bradley from Kingsfork High School, Carol Cross from Lakeland High School, Krista Bush from Nansman River, Rhonda Call Pepper from CCAP, our College and Career Academy at Pruden, Edward Young from Nansman River, Jeff Seneca from John Yates Middle, Tara Britt from Nansman River, Amy Eccleston from Nansman River, and Diana Bells from Elephants Fork Now, you may have remembered Simeon from our class of 2020 Honor Graduate Presentation before the board right here in City Hall. I'll play a quick snippet to refresh your memory, in case you may have forgotten. This one? Oh, just hit them.
Hello, my name is Simeon, and my parents are LaRisha and Timothy Guyer. My plan after high school are to continue my education at Hampton University, my auto major in biology pre-med to further my education to become a cardio phys school surgeon. And my finest memory of SPS is was joining the marching band and representing the state of Virginia in the Sugar Bowl competition in halftime show in New Orleans.
So I play that clip because in that moment, I'm sure that Simeon did not know that two years later, he would be featured in a viral video on social media with a tennis icon. So recently, Simeon was featured in a video with Serena Williams, showing him baton twirling during the Legacy Classic HBCU Basketball Invitational at Hampton University. I chose this memory for our alumni feature this month because it does show how important it is to speak life into our students, to believe in their dreams, goals, and aspirations, and to advocate for them. They truly are our future, and you just never know where they might end up. Our grants and awards for this month, the Virginia Department of Education announced they are providing $12 million in school security equipment grants to protect students, faculty, and visitors in 583 schools in 93 school divisions. The grants will pay for video monitoring systems, voice and video internal communication systems, school bus interior cameras, mass notification systems, visitor identification systems, access control systems, two-way radios, security vestibules, and other security upgrades. And Suffolk Public Schools received $118,400 for John Yates Middle and Nansman Parkway. Centerra Healthcare has awarded SPS Career and Technical Education Program in collaboration with the Science Department grant funding in the amount of $74,075 to enhance our Project Lead the Way biomedical program and anatomy and physiology courses at Lakeland High School. Funds will be utilized to purchase a 21st Century 3D anatomy visualization and virtual dissection tool. And Florence Bowser received $1,000 for teacher resources and supplies from Kimberly Martin, one of Florence Bowser's grandchildren. One of the most effective means of ensuring academic success is to encourage families in their children's education. So I want to take a moment here to talk about our community engagement facilitator, Mr. Melvin Bradshaw. Mr. Bradshaw joined our team, our community engagement team, in July 2020, so right in the middle of the pandemic. He came from Forest Glen, where he was principal. Mr. Bradshaw has been with SPS for 35 years. And since joining the school administrative offices, he has assisted in making a significant impact in Title I engagement. Last Monday, our Title I elementary schools participated in a virtual field trip with the Virginia Living Museum of Newport News. The education associate for the Virginia Living Museum, Ms. Olivia, presented a virtual field trip titled "Animals of Legend and Lore" for our elementary schools. Her presentation included a millipede, a bullfrog, and a tiger salamander. As she presented each animal from the Virginia Living Museum, she gave specific information about each, and then allowed our students to type in their questions. Ms. Deanna Orr, the Conservation and Ambassador Animal Manager for the Virginia Living Museum, monitored those questions as they came in and stated, as I quote, "We enjoyed having your group and wish we could get to every question in the time slot." Over 300 questions came in during the program. I believe that is the highest number of questions we have ever had during a virtual program. What an inquisitive group. So our students were truly engaged and tuned in and asking questions. Mr. Bradshaw coordinated the organization, planning, and promotion of the event, and there were a total of 330 participants from our nine Title I schools. Now, Mr. Bradshaw doesn't just work with Title I, so you may have heard a voice a little bit deeper than mine on occasion, from your school phone calls, and you may have also seen his name on some of our community engagement emails. He will willingly step in as needed to assist in any capacity that he can, from family engagement to communications to crisis management. He wears many hats. Mr. Bradshaw, would you please come to the podium? We just want to share a token of our appreciation for you to show just how much we value you in our community engagement department. Thank you so much, Melvin. I just want to put in a little plug, too, that our next virtual Virginia, excuse me, virtual field trip with the Virginia Living Museum will be on March 14th. Members of our staff have volunteered their time to drive, so we know we've had some challenges in our transportation department. And SPS teachers and members of administration from several schools across our district have volunteered their time to assist our transportation department in their time of need. Some staff members go the extra mile, like Mr. Clayton, an elementary teacher at Mac Ben Elementary, Mac Ben Junior Elementary, who has his own route. He also helps cover routes for drivers who are absent. Mr. Clayton is one of several of our SPS staff members who have volunteered to be of service during a time of need. As I say your name, if you're here, would you mind coming up to join me at the podium? Gabriel Rogers, a teacher at Colonel Fred Cherry Middle, Mr. Larry Clayton, a teacher at Mac Ben Junior Elementary, Dr. Lisa Rath, Assistant Principal at Oakland Elementary, Timothy Getz, teacher at Kingsfork Middle, Scott Graham, teacher at Kingsfork High, and Mr. Edward Woodis, a teacher at Nansman River High. Thank you. I hope you've enjoyed our good news report for this evening.
Thank you. It's always wonderful to hear the great news about our teachers and our students in Suffolk Public Schools and our staff members, especially during this time of the year. At this point, we want to hear from the superintendent with regard to our calendar of special events.
Yes, ma'am. And right before I get to that, I just wanted to follow up on some of the things that Ms. Ward had reported there. And I remember, probably it was my first month into my tenure, that Mr. Riddick had mentioned, Dr. Gordon, we had to always make sure that we're applying for those grants, and we're keeping that streak going, as you can see from the security grant. And thank you to Anthony Hines, John Littlefield, for being able to help organize that. And the last piece that you saw from what Ms. Ward presented, we have staff members going above and beyond the call of duty and helping out the transportation department in driving buses. Now, I'm not sure about you, but having a bus of 53, 65, or 77 kids behind you after you just finished teaching for a full day or doing your other job, that really shows the dedication and efforts that we have here. And we know that things have been challenging, which is part of the reason I do want to address a little bit, some comments about our recent school closures that are going to start next Tuesday. Part of the reason why we sent the information out on Tuesday, because we know that we have reached thresholds to begin to look at that. And I had some conversations with individuals at the State Department of Education, as well as a lot of my colleagues around region, too, who had already closed some schools, just to check on the process. And in Suffolk, some of the things we take a look at is the percentage of staff that are out on quarantine, the total number of classrooms that are closed, and of course, outbreaks in the school. Now, I understand that one of our comments from earlier asked for our information to be updated daily. That can't be done in the city of Suffolk. And part of the reason why it can't be done is that the Virginia Department of Health releases information to us every Monday. Once the information is released to us, that is when we put it on the dashboard. We're not going to talk about quarantining staff or students until the information is actually actually been verified by the Virginia Department of Health. That's part of the reason why we always want to make sure that our numbers match up, and that also includes letters. If there's multiple students that have been tested positive in a class, in this one class, you would get one letter. Each letter doesn't mean each individual student. It means a particular area or class. And we also have to make sure that we're very careful in how we report that information because some tendencies, some classrooms, based on the size, would be easily identifiable. So we always want to make sure to protect student privacy when it comes to our reporting. One of the things that we spoke about when we released the information yesterday, and thank you to Ms. Ward, Dr. Branch, Dr. Brand, our entire cabinet was working on this process all day yesterday, as I was in constant contact. I probably talked to Dr. Buck three times yesterday, kind of giving her an update on what we were doing. One of the things that we have to continue to understand is that this is very serious in what we're dealing with, and we're extremely sensitive to it in the city of Suffolk. And so closing schools is always going to be one of the last options that we're going to take a look at. And one of the questions that I had today from a brief interview that I did is, why did we not do it like other school divisions and announce a closure on Wednesday and do it on Thursday? And our main reason for that is childcare. We want to be able to make sure, especially at the elementary school level, that we give our families enough opportunity to plan for that. So our schools of Kilby Shores, Mac Ben, and Southwestern have five days' notice, and we may end up having to add schools in the weekend, and Martin Luther King's holiday will serve as additional notice. These are the things that are going to occur, and I want to make sure our school community understands that in closing schools, we have to plan for it, but we're also more than likely going to always do it on a week basis. That's because of the five days of quarantine that's been recently been revised by the CDC. It is our goal to close classrooms, to close schools, to help to stop the spread. The city of Suffolk, in two weeks, actually in three weeks, I'm going to go back, went from 342 in one week to 842 the following week to 1590 this week. That's startling. 1590 is more than we had in the entire month of December combined. This is what we're looking at in our city right now. So an interruption of one week is something that we have to do, and I know in conversations that I asked Dr. Buck to have with the board, we have the support of every member of the board here. And the conversations that Ms. Pichon organized yesterday when we spoke with Mr. Rhodes, Ms. Mooney, and Ms. Banks, they fully understood. And we have learned that all of our principals, especially the ones that we are currently watching right now, that this could happen, which is part of the reason that we've asked them to make sure that Canvas is updated and that our instructional staff is prepared to go virtual. This is something that we don't take lightly, but it will be a necessary step. I also want to remind everyone, as from our outstanding presentations from Dr. Branch on our strategic plan and Ms. Forzeman on our budget development process, our chiefs rocked it tonight. Want to remind everyone that tomorrow, we have our latest star cast coming out with Jarmiri Damil, star basketball player at Lakeland High School that is somebody is going to be even greater. I'm sure she's going to be in our Where Are They Now? She's going to be talking about athletics, being an honor student in leadership, as well as her participation on the Superintendent's Advisory Council. Happy Founder's Day to the lovely ladies of Delta Sigma Theta Incorporated, which is today, AKA's Alpha Kappa Alpha, will be on June 15th. Did you just throw up the delta sign right there?
I did.
I thought you did.
I did. Shameless.
Yes, yes. AKA's will be on this Saturday, January 15th. For all of us that have participated in Greek life, definitely want to celebrate all of your years of service to your history, as well as to your communities. For the calendar of special events, Dr. Buck, as a just reminder, Monday, all schools and departments are closed, January 17th, for the Martin Luther King Junior Holiday. Our Saturday Academy, we still have scheduled for Saturday, January 22nd, but we're reviewing options to potentially transition that to a virtual academy, and Dr. Branch will be relaying information if we decide to make that call. January 26th is early dismissal for students, a half-day. Teacher workday is January 31st. This is our date that we kind of use for the transition from first semester to second. That is no school for students, but it is a workday. There is also some professional development, professional learning scheduled for teachers. Next month, School Board Appreciation Month. It is also African American History Month. Can't wait to see some of the great things we have planned. I know last year, we had Ms. McGriff, who was on national news for her depictions of famous African Americans in history. February 3rd is the official beginning of the second semester. Our next Saturday Academy, after that, will be February 5th. National School Counseling Week. Thank you to our school councils for all their hard work. It's February 7th through the 11th. After that, our next early dismissal, a half-day for students, will be February 9th. Parent-teacher conference, also early dismissal today, will be the 10th. And our next school board meeting, Dr. Buck, will also be on February 10th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. At this point in time, I just want to give you a minute because we have to make one adjustment to the consent agenda. We have one position change, so if you would speak to that.
Yes, ma'am. As a part of the personnel report, we have hired our new supervisor of professional learning. I'm going to ask Ms. Catherine Barbosa to come to the podium. Ms. Barbosa is coming to us from Hampton City Public Schools, where she's currently an assistant principal at Jane H. Bryan Elementary School. She also has experience as a general education teacher, gifted education teacher, and a climate and culture coordinator. We love to hear that. She received her Bachelor of Arts and her Master of Arts in Teaching from Christopher Newport University, and an educational specialist degree from Old Dominion University in Educational Leadership. Ms. Barbosa, we'll give you an opportunity right now to introduce yourself to the board and to wish any family members hello if they're here.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Dr. Gordon. Thank you guys for having me this evening. I am very, very excited to join the SPS team. My children go to school in Suffolk. My husband works for Suffolk, and so in a way, it really feels like I'm just joining, you know, literally the rest of my family. So I'm excited to use kind of my broad range of skills and experiences to positively impact professional learning across Suffolk Public Schools and ultimately impact student achievement and student growth. So again, thank you for this opportunity, and I'm glad to be here tonight.
Thank you, and welcome. Madam Vice Chair, we need a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. Other questions? Madam Clerk?
Board members, please vote. Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Vice Chair Byram?
Yes.
Board Chair Brooks-Buck?
Yes.
Motion passed.
At this time, we're going to move on to new business. The first item under new business is an action item. We've contracted transportation for 30 students at Kingsfork High School for the remainder of the school year. Is there a motion to approve this?
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion that we accept this.
The recommendation, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the contracted transportation for 30 students at Kingsfork. Other questions? Madam Clerk?
Board members, please vote. Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Vice Chair Byram?
Yes.
Board Chair Brooks-Buck?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Item two, a resolution 2122-11. Madam Vice Chair.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion that we accept the resolution 21/22-11 on Code of Ethics for Members of the Suffolk School Board, and I would ask that the clerk read that.
A resolution of the School Board of the City of Suffolk, Virginia, adopting a code of ethics for members of the Suffolk City School Board. Whereas a member of the Suffolk City School Board, hereinafter referred to as School Board, it is important that each member of the School Board strive to be an advocate for students and to improve public education. And whereas each member of the School Board will have integrity in all matters and support the full development of all children and the welfare of the community, commonwealth of Virginia, and the nation. And whereas each member of the School Board will attend School Board meetings and seek to be informed concerning issues under consideration. And whereas each member will make policy decisions based on the available facts and appropriate public input. And whereas each member of the School Board understands that the authority for the administration of the schools is vested in the superintendent, and the superintendent is responsible for establishing a process of accountability for administrators. And whereas each member of the School Board will seek to encourage individual School Board member expressions of opinion, and will also seek to facilitate an open, two-way communication process with all segments of the community. And whereas each member of the School Board agrees to communicate to the full School Board and superintendent in accordance with School Board policies, public reaction, and opinion regarding School Board policies and school programs. And whereas each member of the School Board will seek to encourage desired changes through legal and ethical procedures in accordance with all laws, state regulations, and court orders pertaining to schools. And whereas each member of the School Board agrees to use the position of School Board member for personal or partisan gain, and will seek to avoid any conflict of interest or the appearance of impropriety. And whereas each member of the School Board will respect the confidentiality of privileged information and will make no individual decisions or commitments that might compromise the actions of the School Board or school administration. And whereas each member of the School Board will seek to be informed about current educational issues through individual study and participation in appropriate programs, such as those sponsored by the Virginia School Board Association and the National School Board Association. And whereas each member of the School Board will always remember that the foremost concern of the School Board is to improve and enhance the teaching and learning experience for all students in the public schools of Virginia. Be it resolved, therefore, that each member of the School Board will strive to demonstrate appropriate behavior and/or conduct as a School Board member, and that each member of the School Board has indicated their agreement with this resolution and has affixed their signature to the same this 13th day of January 2022.
Is there a second? Second motion. Other questions? Madam Clerk?
Board members, please vote. Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Vice Chair Byram?
Yes.
Board Chair Brooks-Buck?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Madam Vice Chair, resolution 21/22-12.
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to make a motion that we accept resolution 21/22-12, Code of Conduct for the Clerk of the Suffolk School Board, and I'd like for that to be read as well.
A resolution of the School Board of the City of Suffolk, Virginia, adopting a code of conduct for the School Board Clerk of Suffolk City School Board. Whereas, I'm sorry. Whereas, whereas as clerk, as a clerk of the Suffolk City School Board, hereinafter referred to as School Board, it is important, important the clerk of the School Board strive to be an advocate for students and to improve public education. And whereas the clerk of the School Board should have integrity in all matters and support the full development of all children and the welfare of the community, commonwealth of Virginia, and the nation. And whereas the clerk of the School Board should keep correct and proper records of all proceedings of the School Board, and shall prepare such reports and keep such accounts as are required by the Code of Virginia. And whereas the clerk of the School Board will notify the Virginia School Boards Association of the names of newly elected or appointed School Board members in a timely manner. And whereas the clerk of the School Board will come to board meetings informed concerning the issues under consideration. And whereas the clerk of the School Board will communicate in accordance with board policies, public reaction, and opinions regarding board policies and school programs to the School Board and superintendent. And whereas the clerk of the School Board will refrain from using the clerk position for personal or partisan gain and avoid any conflict of interest or the appearance of impropriety. And whereas the clerk of the School Board will respect the confidentiality of privileged information and make no individual decisions or commitments that might compromise the school division. And whereas the clerk of the School Board will be informed about current educational issues through individual study and participation in appropriate programs, such as those sponsored by the Virginia School Board Association and the National School Boards Association. And whereas the clerk of the School Board will always remember that the foremost concern of the school division is to improve and enhance the teaching and learning experience for all students in the public schools of Virginia. Be it resolved, therefore, that the clerk of the School Board will strive to demonstrate appropriate behavior and/or conduct as a School Board clerk, and I've indicated my agreement with this resolution and have affixed my signature to the same this 13th day of January 2022.
Is there a second?
Madam Chair, I second the motion.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded that we accept this resolution. Madam Clerk?
Board members, please vote. Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Vice Chair Byram?
Yes.
Board Chair Brooks-Buck?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you, board members. At this time, we have public speakers on non-agenda items. We have a public speaker on non-agenda items. Would you please, Madam Clerk is going to read a statement. Before you begin, we have a clock that's going to appear on the screen. You have five minutes to speak, and there is a person in the audience who is one of our security officers who will give you a warning at four minutes and 30 seconds so that you will know that your time is almost up, so you could bring your comments to a close. Once that is done, we expect you to move from the microphone. The officer in the back will act as our parliamentarian and will assist anyone in leaving the microphone after five minutes. Thank you for your cooperation. Madam Clerk?
It is the intent of the School Board to ensure that the affairs of the Board be conducted in an open and orderly manner, that all persons desiring to address the Board are afforded an opportunity to do so. Any persons addressing the Board shall, one, confine their comments to matters germane to the business of the School Board; two, refrain from words or statements which, from their usual construction and common acceptance, are construed as insults and tend to incite violence or breach of the peace; three, refrain from obscenity, vulgarity, or other breach of respect; four, comply with the time limit for public comment as set by the Board, which can be up to five minutes unless the Board, through the exercise of its discretion, decides to allow less than five minutes for public comment; refrain from cumulative or repetitive remarks; and six, refrain from making any comments regarding any pending student discipline or employee grievance matters. The appropriate form for such matters is the applicable administrative hearing provided by state law or where appropriate court proceeding. The School Board welcomes comments from the public as appropriate. Board members will listen to public comments but will not comment unless granted permission by the Chair. The Chairman or other presiding officer shall preserve decorum and shall decide all questions of public order subject to appeal to the Board. At the request of the Chairman, a city police officer shall act as sergeant-at-arms at all Board meetings. That officer shall, under the direction of the Chairman or other presiding officer, have charge of the Board chambers, the Board conference room, the waiting areas and corridors adjacent thereto, and the school administration building, and shall prevent disorder or interruption of the business of the Board. Please state your name and address before speaking.
Z. Cherry will speak about bullying. Z. Cherry will speak about bullying. Z. Cherry will speak about bullying. When you come forward, would you state your name and your address?
Speak your name, state your name and your address. Z. Cherry? Yes, Jeremiah Nupser. By council address?
Like House address? 326, North Capital Street?
Okay.
Good, huh? Mm-hmm. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jeremiah Nosa. I am currently a sixth grader student that attends Kingswood School. I decided I'll be a doctor or veterinarian. I come from a family of lifesavers, although I haven't actually made a choice just yet. I know working in a hospital as my mom, two lifesavers, would be a great deal. I mean, actually more made a choice just yet. I know working in a hospital as my mom deals with a good support. Then, again, animals deserve care too and support. Now you see how I haven't been able to decide just yet, as I want to help. As I stand here before everyone today, it took courage. I have an ongoing issue at school. I really need some guidance. All those staff and faculty at my school, such as Mr. Mason, Mr. Easton, Mr. Jones, Mr. J, Ms. Frankly, Ms. Holler, Ms. Butts, Ms. D, Ms. Kayla from the front office, as well as Ms. Bradshaw, the assistant principal, Ms. Reese, and the principal for the seventh grade, Mr. Ely, are aware that I've been bullied, being bullied since October 2021. I have, I had a scuffle on the bus while the bus was moving in October. The next day, I stayed home from school. When I arrived back at school, Student One continued to harass me. She didn't miss a beat on the bus. Heading home, Student One got off at my stop. Her mother was there waiting for her at the bus stop to drop threats and F-bombs as fa- as she followed me home. The Student One had lied to her mother and everything she done to me. She acted as I did to her. As his, her mother told my aunt, I stood there in shock. I didn't speak up for myself. I didn't know how. I couldn't believe the prayer and wish I asked for being able to enjoy middle school had came to an end. None of my peers spoke up at the time. The only one stood in disbelief, laughed, and joking. In front of my aunt, who babysits me while my mother work, is that Student One, Miss- student mothers didn't even have the same energy. It had shimmered down. She even stated that she wasn't, wasn't, wanted us to be friends. I was completely, I was confused but not against peace. A few weeks went by. Everything was calm and cool. Then, one day, Student One approached me at school. She started, stated, "As long as my friends don't like you and want to fight you, I do too." Here we go. It began all over again. Then Student Two and her friends came along and assaulted me. My mom then filed charges. As the school not responsibly with approach measures to resolve the issue, they removed me from the class and put me back in the same class. I never had mentioned what, I never met with the school and her parents. December 14, 2021, I was given two or froze for suspension. Prior to, I was on the bus heading home. No teasing took place. This time, Student One got out of her seat, took off her swish sweater, and invaded my space. I just sat there. I didn't do nothing. She hit me. I hit her back. We tussled. I got hit by her cousin, Student Two, and her god sister, Student Three. I was jumped on the bus this time also instead of the bus driver continuing the route. Then she, this time she pulled over. She did, then she called somebody from the school and told them what happened. Student One parent came, was the first parent on sight. Just after it happened, she yelled, "My child has bruises." Now, even though the, there are videos surf- surfacing on the internet from beginning to end, I was suspended for ten days. I was suspended for ten days and separated after I got jumped. For the school staff and faculty to have been walking, be to walking me from class to class, protecting, for the protection, tell me enough. They know it is wrong, yet I am the one not in school. Why not?
Thank you.
Can she finish those last three sentences?
No. But, um, her principal, if you wait until the meeting is over, I'll speak with you if you wait until the meeting is over. Thank you. Dr. Brown is going to talk to you right now. Okay? So step outside. Dr. Brown is going to speak with you right now. Okay. Follow the police officer and that gentleman he's with right now. Thank you. At this time, we're going to have comments by board members. Comments by board members. Mrs. Jenkins, would you like to start?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I just want, as I always start, thank you, Dr. Gordon, for your leadership and truly having the success of every aspect of Suffolk Public School at the center of your heart. You're just not a lot of talk. You are full of action, and we see the success from the actions and the steps that you're taking. Dr. Branch, and our financial expert, I just want to thank you for your presentation and your report that you did tonight. No questions because you pretty much answered everything as you presented it. Thank you so much. I also want to just thank all, everyone else who is a part of the Suffolk Public School family. We cannot do it without you. There's no small person. There's no, I'm bigger than you. We're all on the same track, trying to continue to have the best Suffolk Public School district. But I do want to highlight, um, a certain group and to just thank you for being on the front line, and that's our nurses, who, um, because I work in a school diff- a different school district, I see the long lines outside the nurses', um, room, waiting for temperature checks or clothes change or whatever. And when the COVID hits or the symptoms, that's the person that they go to. So I just want to thank you for everything, um, that you're doing and putting your life, your family's life, and working hard hours, and I just, we all appreciate you, and I just don't want you to think that we, we do not. I also want to, um, congratulate, congratulate everyone who was honored, um, tonight. Again, we appreciate you. I don't want anyone to ever think that we do not because we do appreciate everything that you're doing. I want to, um, highlight two, a event that's coming up on Saturday, I mean, I'm sorry, on Monday, and it is the, um, they're going to be honored, two of our teachers, and it was in the newspaper. Mrs. Valene Sharp and, uh, let's see, who is the other one? Ms. Perry, I believe, will be honored, and this is the Estee Lois May's, um, Eighth Annual MLK Day, and this, this is a scholarship program that one of our great citizens of Suffolk, Mrs. Ebony Wright, um, she's been doing this for, I think, eight years, and she has awarded thousands of dollars to our Suffolk Public School students. They're going to college. They've done well because college costs a lot of money, and we just want to appreciate, um, her for doing that. We want to appreciate her for recognizing, um, our staff because we have awesome staff, and you can tune in virtually because that's the way it's going to be presented on Monday at 10 o'clock. And if you go to Suffolk Pub- Suffolk News Herald, it will show you the link and everything, and also on Facebook. So, and I want, appreciate all my seatmates. Thank you for everything that you do. Being on the school board is not a glamour job. We work and we work hard. We just, this is not the only thing we do. Our phones ring, our emails go off, text messages all night long, and we do the best that we can. And, uh, thank you all for your patience and for telling us, you know, coming to us and letting us know what you feel, what you see, and we will try to do our best to continue to have the best SPS. Thank you so much.
Board Member Mayo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, I certainly want to offer special thanks to Dr. Gordon and the leadership team at the school administrative office, our school administrators, teachers, and support staff for your leadership, perseverance, and patience. Being a leader is not easy, and making the right decisions for the good of all is not easy. We can be sure that the best interests of all of our students and staff have been taken into consideration when decisions are made. Parents and Suffolk Public Schools supporters, thank you for your patience and understanding as we work together to keep our children and our staff safe. I would also like to offer congratulations to all who were recognized this evening during our good news report. We are very proud of your achievements and the work that you do. Also, kudos to Dr. Branch and Mrs. Forrestman for the excellent presentations during our work sessions, and they were so good that we didn't have any questions because they explained everything explicitly. So a fantastic job from you. We are so grateful for our Suffolk Public Schools staff and all the work that you do, uh, especially during this unprecedented time. The pandemic continues to affect how we live and work, and it has affected all of us in some way, personally and professionally. It certainly has caused many challenges, but we must not despair because we have to keep moving forward. And it is important that a safe environment is provided for our students and staff, and certainly if they feel safe, then learning can take place, and our students can receive the education they need to prepare them for the future. We are in this together as we, we remember that our goal is to build the best SPS. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Board Member Riddick?
I would like to start by saying thank you to my constituents for giving me the opportunity, um, to serve. I count it as joy that I'm able to serve them and serve them well. In doing so, I would like to inform the City of Suffolk for all Savokians that there will be an opportunity for COVID testing on Friday, January 14th, at East Suffolk Recreation Center. That address is 138 South Sixth Street. It will be from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., so there will be free COVID testing at East Suffolk Recreation Center from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., located at 138 South Sixth Street. I also want to say a huge shout, I want to give a huge shout out to our communications department and our parent, uh, you all are doing a outstanding job. It seems like everywhere I go, I'm running into people who are singing your praises, especially for the Pajama Jam reading night and the virtual field trip, um, with the Virginia Living Museum. Keep up the great work. If there's anything I can do in addition to being a board member to assist you, um, please feel free to let me know. Thank you for all that you're doing. And to teachers, I just have this quote that, uh, came to me today, and it says, "Teaching is a work of the heart." To those who teach, you often don't do it because of the financial gains or the other things, but it's because that's where your passion is. And I just want to say thank you to all of our teachers and our support staff because you are the essential pieces of Suffolk Public Schools, and you are one of the major factors that allow us to do what we're doing, and that's educating our most prized asset. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Riddick. Madam Vice Chair.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Buck. Ditto to what has been said previously. I want to especially thank Dr. Branch for that outstanding report that she did. Uh, as usual, she covered all the aspects, everything, and as Ms. Jenkins said, we didn't have any questions or concerns. I also want to thank Mr. Dickerson, Sean Dickerson, because he works very diligently on those surveys, and compiling that information is not an easy task, and, uh, sometimes he's, I believe he's present right now, but he was when we did the report. But, uh, special thanks to him. And any person who participated in the survey, that surveying of that many people, students, stakeholders, parents, staff, and so forth, was great. As she said, I think we had 15,000, over 15,000 responses, uh, you know, written in, and that's a lot to read, plus it gives us a lot of information that will really help us moving forward with our strategic plan. So congratulations to everyone. Please continue to give your input to these types of surveys because it does give us tremendous information, helps the superintendent and his staff as we move forward. I want to congratulate all the people who were recognized, uh, this evening. There was a long list of musicians and students, and we have so many things to be proud of in our system, and these students often do not get enough praise, and I'm glad that Ms. Ward is doing this, uh, monthly, uh, commending our students who are making outstanding contributions even in these difficult times. In the teacher spotlight, I always look at that because I'm a former teacher by profession and always will be, and it gives me great pleasure to see when one of my students is recognized in that group. And again, this month, I have a student who I taught at John Yates High School. She graduated from there, went on to Virginia State, I believe, and, uh, became a special education teacher, came back to her home city. And when I was at Nansman River as a teacher, she worked with me in my inclusion class, one of the first inclusion classes in the city. And, uh, that's Tara Britt. She's my former student, and I want to commend her. It makes me so proud to see, uh, what she is doing in our school system and the contributions that she's making. Also, you know, I know we mentioned the employees stepping up and doing all these great things, and, uh, you know, sometimes they don't get enough pat, pats on the back. I want to commend our superintendent for taking the, uh, initiative to, uh, reward our people for these extra duties that they're doing above and beyond the call of duty, and for commending these people, uh, that are driving buses and doing all kinds of things because they have a life too, and they're giving more of their life at this time of their lives than ever, and we should be eternally grateful to those people. So thank you to all of those that are doing all the extra classes, the bus routes that they're picking up, and all the things, you know, that the people in, on our staff are doing. And I know the SAO staff, they have stepped up. All of you are working diligently. We're understaffed in many areas, as I said, with Ms. Forrestman when she gave her excellent report tonight. She's understaffed and has been since I've been on this board, but continues to do an outstanding job, and, and that's what it's all about. I thank all the employees of Suffolk Public Schools, and I say to everyone, even this terrible time shall pass. There's going to be a better day. I believe that in my heart. And thank you again, Dr. Gordon, for all you are doing, your leadership. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I want to say thank you as well. Ditto to all of, all of these statements that have been made. We have a terrific staff here. We have terrific parents who work with us. I realize that this is a frustrating time for everybody. Schools open, schools closed, children are sick, parents are sick. We're just, we're just, I'm just in prayer for you, and those of us, all of us on this board, believe in that partic- those of us, all of us on this board believe in that particular process, and we have that faith. So we're praying for you in hopes that everyone will be able to survive this terrible time. When I got on the board, I want to thank the board members who supported me as chair and who continues to support me as chair. When I ran for office, I had as a goal to change the conversation about Suffolk Public Schools, and I continue to talk about the good things that we do because we do a lot of good things. We have wonderful students, and when I'm around other people from other school systems, I always tell them I have the best and the brightest students, and I tell them I also have the best-looking students as well. There's no shame in my game. I have no problem with that at all. But I want you to know that I'm very serious about that. We have some wonderful, very strong people here, from our leader, Dr. Gordon, throughout our staff, our teachers. We have some very strong people here who do an excellent job. And I've taught in different places in the country and different places in the world. We have a lot of talent in Suffolk, and we don't take that for granted. This board doesn't. We appreciate you. And if we can't give you all that we want to give you because we can never pay you what you're worth. And that's from the people who are here on our staff, the officers who protect us when we come to these meetings, and just everybody, our bus drivers, our custodians who keep things clean, all of you, we value you. So we thank you, and of course, we appreciate all the things that you do for us. We want you to have a blessed evening. Now, I'm going to go through the informational items, going to end those comments there. I do make comments because, as I indicated earlier this evening, I'm not going to let anybody use our platform to have misinformation go out in the community. So I do make those comments, and I will continue to make those comments because I'm not going to let people misinform the public about what we do. We do too good a job to let somebody believe something that is not true. Now, there are informational items. There are some things that I do want to highlight, and they are our condolences. Unfortunately, some of our retired staff members did pass away in November and December. Doris Summers, who worked for us as a cafeteria associate, Margaret Jones, who was a teacher assistant, Geraldine Schwartz, who was a teacher assistant, and Darlene Alexander. Those are four of our former members who are retired, but they passed away in November and December. So we'll keep their families in our thoughts and in our prayers, if that's your tradition. And at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Madam Chair, make a motion that we adjourn.
May I get a second? It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. I don't believe there are any questions, so, Madam Clerk.
Board members, please vote. Board Member Jenkins?
Yes.
Board Member Mayo?
Yes.
Board Member Riddick?
Yes.
Vice Chair Byram?
Yes.
Board Chair Brooks Buck?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Meeting is adjourned.